Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
So hopefully you'll have it.
Okay. Yeah, okay, sounds good.
All right.
Hey Travis?
Doing well, thank you.
Hey. That she wanted you to have.
Sure.
I don't know, I got nothing.
I got nothing.
I'm not gonna be in the office until Thursday.
Appreciate you sending that in.
Is that where?
Had a chance to check what you sent me, but I appreciate that.
Alright, okay.
I'm gonna wait, when am I ready? It was simply the user, apparently, because it keeps sending me new texts. But it wasn't accepted or received.
Ah, okay.
It was just changing the user name. I'll check it anymore.
Okay. Alright.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Hey, how you doing?
There's actually only one fan in there.
Okay, that's fine.
So I just have it in my bag and I'll just put it in a box.
Okay.
Yep.
It was all about the price of everything. Cover a day. I don't know if it was the answer, well, it should have been. She called.
Thanks so much.
Okay.
How are you? I'm good, doing alright? Doing alright?
I'm doing really good.
Good, good, good.
I look as good as you look, I've been doing a whole lot better.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it.
How can you hold it, how do we get such pretty lucky? Lucky for the service. I guess lucky is the right word.
Wow. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay. You didn't hear me. I know, we don't wanna, we're gonna start. Okay. I know. We'll call to order the City of Douglasville City Council regular meeting for tonight, which is October the nineteenth. Our invocation will be done by Pastor Darius Elder, Small Groups Pastor of Chapel Hill Church. And then after that, the Mayor Pro Tim, Mayor Pro Tim Terry Miller will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the invocation.
Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, thank you for your many abundant blessings. Thank you for the gift of life, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance, and for relationships. Thank you for the ability to be involved in the useful work such as this. For the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. We ask that you would grant our mayor the various levels of city officials and disassemble council the wisdom to govern amid the challenges and issues of these times. Grant them a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people. Grant them, oh God, a thirst for justice and righteousness and the confidence of what is good and fitting. Endow them the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Award each of them tonight personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. We pray for the agenda set before them tonight. Give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around the great city of Douglasville. It's in the blessed name we pray, amen.
Allegiance to the eye of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Mayor Pro Tim for leading us in the pledge and Pastor Eldor, we appreciate your invocation as well. That was really nice. So I'd like to welcome you to the City of Douglasville's regular voting meeting. This is a city council regular meeting of agenda items where official action will be taken tonight on the items that were discussed at our legislative work session last Thursday. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the agenda item, comments from citizens and delegates for you to make your comments. I'd like to go over just a few protocol issues and then we'll get right into our meeting. I'd like to welcome you again, this meeting is being taped. It is a meeting that's being conducted in whole or in part by teleconference. Our elected officials are here, some individuals that may want to speak but are not in person can certainly do that on via Zoom software. This open meeting of the Douglasville Mayor and Council being conducted by teleconference consistent with the official code of Georgia annotated section fifty dash fourteen dash one G due to emergency conditions involving public safety in order to mitigate the transmission of the coronavirus and to reduce the risk of COVID-19. That section which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows local governments to meet in whole or in part by teleconference in event of an emergency so long as means are afforded for the public to have simultaneous access to the teleconference meeting. For this meeting, we are convening partially by Zoom software as shown on the city's website describing how the public may join, which is via YouTube media platform. So we'll go over, that's how we're going to have our meeting, that's still under the governor's order, that is now extended to November the ninth. So we'll ask that you will come to the podium if you are here and you'd like to make a comment on any of the agenda items that will be presented by the committee chairperson. That person who's representing that agenda item will come forward, give your name and address for the record. Myself and council members will possibly ask clarifying questions that we did not have an opportunity to ask on last Thursday. The committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience, there's a maximum of twenty minutes per folks that are in favor of the item and twenty for those in opposition. Each person has five minutes to speak. When you come forward, please give your name and address for the record prior to approaching the podium. You should have filled out a card and handed that card into the assistant of the city manager, I think that's the person back there, Ms. Vicki. And you give your name and address for the record, those speaking, if we have someone that's speaking on teleconference, you can give your name and address when you are allowed to talk. Each person has one opportunity to speak. This is not a question and answer format, it's just here for us to receive the information and to move on. This regular meeting is a voting meeting, so it'll go a little differently than it was for this past Thursday. It'll go a little bit quicker because we'll ask for a vote after the item is presented. Only one person speaking at a time, please, please do not disrupt the meeting. And lastly, if you have a telephone or cellphone or any kind of electronic device, we ask that you'll put those and power those off. We'll put them in silent mode so they won't be disruptive during the meeting. Okay? So now we'll go on with the agenda, there are agendas printed on the outside on the table or you can follow along on the screen. So we do not have any announcements or presentations and now we'll go to the minutes for approval. I have the minutes of the legislative work session of October the first, 2020, and the regular meeting of October fifth, 2020. Open the floor for a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams, I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. I don't know who, if that was Mayor Pro Tim or Councilman Davis. But it's been properly moved in second to approve the minutes as presented for the legislative work session of October first and October fifth, 2020. Do I see or have any corrections or comments from council members? Thank you, I don't see any. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. No nays, all the ayes have it, so the minutes are approved. Now I will open the floor, let's see if we can get technology to catch up with us, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis has been properly moved in second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do we have any further discussion as relates to this item? Any comments or questions or any further deliberation from the council? Thank you, I don't see any. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The consent agenda is approved as presented. We are now at number seven, which is Economic Development Committee, and that's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have no business at this time under the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. We'll move on to Finance Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have two items tonight under finance. A is to authorize the mayor to sign a construction contract with Albion Scacia Enterprises LLC for design and construction of the eighty-five seventy-eight Club Drive renovation project. Mr. Thompson spoke with us on Thursday and went over the bids and he's here tonight to answer any additional questions if there may be any. Is there anyone? Mr. Thompson, do you have any new information to provide us with concerning the bid or anything to do with this issue?
No, sir.
Thank you. No questions? Seeing none, then I'll make a motion that we approve item twenty dash four eighty-three.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes, it's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty dash four eighty-three. Do we have any additional comments, any questions or concerns as it relates to this item?
Madam Mayor, in very short order, if we could ask Mr. Thompson just for clarity and for those that may be watching online, can you give us just a general idea of what the property will be used for when it is renovated? If this is not a fair question for you, Mr. Thompson, maybe we could have someone else, some other staff member tackle that.
I don't mind. Marcus Thompson, sixty-seven zero one Church Street. So the facilities will be used, we will transition the Parks and Rec departments into the facilities after everything is renovated.
This will be the Parks and Rec department as far as their maintenance, maintenance building?
That is correct, yeah.
For all the Parks and Rec employees, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that that was spelled out, thank you very much, that's all that I have, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, I did want to elaborate on your question for explanation, I did talk with city manager today about the filling station area and I was wondering if we were gonna close it down or not? And she said no, that that area still will be used by Parks and Recs because they do have that need as well as our Maintenance and Sanitation Department did as well, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, it's been properly moved in second, any other discussion as it relates to this item from council members? Not seeing any, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, item twenty dash four eighty-three is unanimously approved.
Item B.
Mm-hmm.
Authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with the Erosion Company LLC for soil erosion abatement at the Town Green Works site. Mr. Thompson, anything, anything other than what we discussed on Thursday?
An additional to that.
Okay, questions, comments of council, any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll make a motion that we approve item twenty dash five twenty-two.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, it's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty dash five twenty-two. Do we have any further discussion or any comments as it relates to this item from council members? Thank you, I don't see any. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, item twenty dash five twenty-two is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that's all we have tonight under finance.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on to item nine, which is Housing and Community Affairs Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, there's no business tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Mm-hmm. We move on to Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No business today, just hand, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, Councilman Davis. Personnel and Organization Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have no business tonight in personnel and organization.
Thank you, sir. I will move on then to item number twelve, which is a lot, we'll have to take a breath, and that is Planning and Development Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
You're correct, we do have several items tonight under Planning and Development.
Yes, sir.
We will start with item A. Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a change in zoning from RA Residential Agricultural County to R2 Single Family Residential Detached District City for one point oh four one acres at seventeen thirteen Blair Bridge Road found in landlot six seventy-two, District eighteen, Section two, Parcel four, application by Republic Property Company Incorporated. Ms. Patrice Williams had assisted us with that, Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. I don't have anything new to add, but we do have the applicant here with us tonight, Mr. Jerry Dolls, if you do have any additional questions for them.
Madam Mayor, council? Any public comment? This being a public hearing, we need to give opportunity to anyone wanting to speak with new information for or against, do we have anyone? I think you've been given a very complete explanation on Thursday night during that hearing as to why this needed to be changed. So seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, if there's no other comment, I'll make a motion to approve item twenty dash three ninety-six.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, did someone click the button? I think it was Councilman Watts. I don't see it on my screen. I know we had a second.
Estes.
Estes?
Clicked the button for a second.
Did you push the button?
There you go.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty dash three ninety-six. Do we have any additional comments or questions as it relates to this item? Any further discussion? Thank you, I don't see any, all those in favor of approving item twenty dash three ninety-six, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, twenty dash three ninety-six is unanimously approved.
Item B.
There we go.
Consider a petition to annex one point oh four one acres at seventeen thirteen Blair Bridge Road in landlot six seventy-two, District eighteen, Section two, Parcel four, application by Gregory Kinsel, Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. At this time, staff does not have any information to add, again, we have the applicant with us if you have any further questions.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Questions? No questions? Public comment? We'll then take item twenty dash five zero six and make a motion to approve.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis, it's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty dash five zero six. Do we have any additional comments or questions or any deliberation as far as this annexation is concerned from council members? Thank you, I don't see any. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, twenty dash five zero six is approved.
Item C.
Mm-hmm.
Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a change in zoning from RA Residential Agricultural District County to LI Light Industrial District City for eight point one six four acres at seventeen oh six Blair's Bridge Road, landlot six seventy-two, District eighteen, Section two, Parcel three, application by Republic Property Company Incorporated. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. Again, nothing new to add, we do have the applicant with us.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any questions of the applicant? Council, Madam Mayor? Again, it being a public hearing, we can need to give opportunity to anyone that may want to speak with new information tonight on, in favor or against this application. Seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing, make a motion to approve item twenty dash three ninety-five.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Estes has been properly moved in second to approve item twenty dash three ninety-five. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council members? Thank you, not seeing any. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, twenty dash three ninety-five is unanimously approved.
Moving on to item D.
Mm-hmm.
Consider a petition to annex eight point one six four acres at seventeen oh six Blair Bridge Road in landlot six seventy-two, District eighteen, Section two, Parcel three, application by Carlton Wayne Forster, Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. Again, nothing new to add, we do have the applicant with us.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any questions or comments concerning this petition for annexation? None? Okay, make a motion then to approve item twenty dash five one one.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, I think it was the Mayor Pro Tim that made the second, not certain. I don't see it on my screen. But it's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty dash five eleven. Do we have any additional conversation, any comments about this petition for annexation? Thank you, not seeing any. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, twenty dash five eleven is unanimously approved.
Moving on to item E.
Mm-hmm.
Hold a public hearing and consider a request for variances. One, to reduce the required one hundred foot minimum side setback between an industrial property adjacent to a residential district in Section five point oh four B of the Unified Development Ordinance by twelve feet for a remaining requirement of eighty-eight feet. And two, reduce the required fifty foot undisturbed natural buffer in Section eight point oh two B of the Unified Development Ordinance by ten feet for a remaining requirement of forty feet on the east side of a lot of eight point one six four acres at seventeen oh six Blair's Bridge Road, landlot six seventy-two, District eighteen, Section two, Parcel three, application by Republic Property Company Incorporated. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. Again, nothing new to add, we do have the applicant with us if you have any further questions.
Okay, questions, comments, council? Any public comment, anyone would like to have input in this public hearing for or against? I do have one question, but I want to make sure that we don't have anyone else that'd like to make a comment. Seeing none, then just one question, Ms. Williams, and I'm sure that this is shown on the plat, I just did not look it up. I thought it would be easier on me and I apologize for it being any more work on anyone else. When we consider these variances to reduce the sideline, to reduce the undisturbed buffer and so forth and so on, are we still legal within the state requirements? Because I know in many cases our state requirements, we are more restrictive than our state requirements, we're staying within those, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, just want to make sure. Any other question or comment, and I apologize for not asking that on Thursday. Seeing none, make a motion to approve item twenty dash five zero eight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes, it's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty dash five zero eight. Do we have any other deliberation, any other comments, concerns about this item from council members? Thank you, I don't see any. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, twenty dash five zero eight is approved.
Moving on to item F. Consider a request for approval of a development plan for eight point one six four acres. for eight point one six four acres at seventeen oh six Blair Bridge Road, landlot six seventy-two, District eighteen, Section two, Parcel three for plans dated September sixth, two thousand twenty, sixteenth, two thousand twenty, I'm sorry. Application by Republic Property Company Incorporated. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. I have nothing new to add. We, again, we have the applicant with us if you have any further questions.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Questions, comments concerning the development plan that has been submitted for approval? I understand in our discussion from Thursday night that all of the requirements were present. Facades were within tolerance, and it was an approvable plan. What's your pleasure, council? Madam Mayor, any questions? Seeing none, I make a motion then to approve twenty dash five zero nine.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmen Estes and Davis. I'm not certain who. It was a quick draw. I can't see the second. But it's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty dash five zero nine. Do we have any other comments as it relates to this item, any further discussion? Thank you. Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item twenty dash five zero nine is approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
What was that, six items on one property?
That's a lot.
Okay. Moving right along.
Order of the alphabet.
Let's don't go that far.
I know.
Item G. Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a change in zoning from G.C. General Commercial District City and R.L.D. Low Density Single Family Residential District County to P.R.D. Planned Residential Development District for eighteen point two three five acres at five oh one one, five oh two nine, five oh four nine, and five oh five nine Reservoir Drive and Arbor Place Boulevard in landlot twenty-four, District one, Section five, Parcel ten, eleven, seventy-four, and seventy-six, and landlot twenty-three, District one, Section five, Parcells one twenty-four and one twenty-five. Application by In-Line Communities LLC. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. I don't have anything new to add at this time, but we do have the applicant with us tonight for additional questions.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Comment, questions? Yes, Madam, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, I'm not sure if this would be the item under which we discussed the stipulations that we talked about. Would it be fair to?
It is, and I have it.
Okay. So, we want to make sure that the second entrance is obviously, that's being submitted as part of the plan, so that's there. We want to make sure also that the fence line is addressed and the rental ratio is also addressed in this. Do we have?
I believe Mr. Chairman has that information when he makes his motion.
I do have that information, as had been discussed in, on Thursday night, and I'll be glad to, to share that. Are there other questions or comments before we talk about that issue? Is there any other issue? Let's see if we have any other public, public comment on it, and then we'll discuss that, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Again, it being a public hearing, I need to give opportunity to anyone to speak for or against with new information. If so, please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and we'd be, we'd be glad to hear from you.
My name is Cindy Welch, three zero zero two Concord Way, Douglasville, Georgia. I do want to thank the developer applicant and the council on everything that you have worked with on getting this zone. I do like that he's putting up a six-foot fence. He's given me a picture of it. It's, it's wonderful. The only thing I don't like is he's still doing one-car garages for ninety-four units. Ninety-one units get a two-car garage. Be nice if we had more two-car garages, but okay. And the other thing is about the number of rentals, and I know Mr. Adams has brought that up, but we would like no more than ten percent rentals. Or at the most fifteen, but, and we'd like to have that part of the covenants. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Welch. Anyone else? New information? Anyone that would speak for or against, please come forward. Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing. And I would say that I appreciate all of your input. I appreciate all of the professionalism that's been shown between the developer and the homeowners, the community. I believe the community has spoken, and I believe the developer has done a good job. Any other comment that you had, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, since you were, that is in your ward?
I would reiterate what, what you said. I think it's been a, it's been a successful process. I think what is important is that people listen to each other instead of taking, you know, opposing stances and, and strident positions that just because out of principle, people will actually listen to each other and work, work through the differences on this project. And I think it's great. We can hold it up as a good example throughout the city on how to get, how to make things happen that satisfy people and move the city forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Or any other? Yes, Coach Watts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm just curious about the mechanics, which I agree with. I like the idea of a cap percentage of rentals. I just was curious, you, you have a development, it's run by an HOA, and there's a combination of rentals from companies that have come in and maybe bought a few townhomes and are renting them, or private owners renting their own place out. How, how's that enforced when all of a sudden somebody's ready to move somewhere else and they're going to rent it, and you're maybe at the cap? I just was wondering about the mechanics of that, how that works.
We actually have that situation currently in Arbor Station where a substantial portion of the houses are rental units. So, it, it's all, it's classified by property, basically, property address. So, the benefits within Arbor Station, for instance, mostly the pool and the tennis courts. You can use those if you're a member, if you're, if you're a dues-paying member of the HOA. In order to pay the dues, that's recorded by address. So, if you're living in a rental property and the owner of that rental property has paid their dues, you're entitled to use the facilities. That's basically how it, it works.
Well, and I guess what, what I was pointing to is that you have the cap. There's, the ten percent has been reached. There's ten percent of the townhomes that are being rented. But this guy that lives down the street who's getting ready to move out of state, he's deciding he's going to rent his. How does, how does he know, and how's that enforced?
I would turn to legal for that one. That's outside my pay grade to answer that question.
And that's not, I know that's not up to us. You know, once, I mean, it's out of our hands, but I was just kind of curious.
Maybe our city attorney can answer that. I don't know.
Ms. Littlefield, can you help us?
Sure. What we proposed to the chairman is that before any building permits are issued, the developer would identify ninety percent of the units and record covenants that say that it can't be used for rental purposes, or maybe it can't be occupied unless there's one of the owners residing there.
Basically, that would be a stipulation built into the zoning. Did you all have, did someone else have a comment or a question? Okay. Any other? Seeing none, then we will close the public hearing. And again, I appreciate everyone's cooperation in this. So, I will read this. I will make a motion that we approve item twenty dash four eighty-one with the following, with the following stipulation. The density is limited to one hundred and eighty-five total units, residential units. All units which face Chapel Hill Road or Arbor Place Boulevard shall have garages with doors which face away from the named street. Prior to issuance of any building permit, the developer or owner shall identify not fewer than one hundred and seventy-six units and record covenants in the Douglas County deed records limiting occupancy to unit owners and prohibiting use of the units for rental occupancy. Now, for those that are better in math than I am, that's ninety percent, which means you could have ten percent rental units. That's my motion. Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve item twenty dash four eighty-nine with the stipulations as read by the chair, Councilmember Adams. Yes, sir?
You mentioned the fence in there as well?
The fence is not there as a special stipulation in this motion. I'm sorry.
Please look in the back at your development plan. I know that there's a picture of the fence that was offered. If it satisfies what you're looking to do.
My apologies, folks. There is a picture of a, identified as a six-foot fence within this ordinance, within this ordinance number. Okay. Sorry, I did not mention that. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
I will second your motion.
Thank you so much. It's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty dash four eighty-nine, eighty-one with the stipulations as read by Mr. The Chairman, Councilmember Adams, which is inclusive of the fence that's in the pictures. And it's been seconded. Did we get a second? Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem, Terry Miller. So, it's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty dash four eighty-one with the stipulations that were read and to the record. Do we have any additional comments?
Madam Mayor, I believe the applicant's representative would like to say something.
Yes, sir.
Phil Fowler, Post Box forty-nine, Douglasville, and I'm here, of course, with Mr. Mufal. If I did the math correctly, you said ten percent of the units, and that's one hundred and eighty-five, that's eighteen and a half units. And I'm not sure that a hundred and seventy-six is right math.
Like I said, Mr. Fowler, I didn't do the math.
I know. You graduated from Douglas County High School, just like I did, Mr. Adams.
I'm sorry. Where's Mr. Segal when we need him?
I know it.
Probably listening.
I was going to say, keep my distance.
Sixty-six rather than a hundred and seventy-six.
It would be one hundred and sixty-six and a half, or one hundred and one hundred and sixty-seven. My apologies. Do I need to modify that motion? Ms. Littlefield?
I withdraw my second in order for you to withdraw your.
And Mr. Adams may have one other comment about this. It's appropriate deed restricting by saying that we're going to have these in this particular location by deed be rental only may be difficult. Brian can talk more about that specifically in a moment. But it may be difficult to say in advance, this is going to be rental. If you can cap it at a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty-seven and let us choose, and then no more after that, that may be helpful. I recognize, as was mentioned a moment ago, the working out of this could be difficult. Mr. Mufal may be able to explain further.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Ms. Littlefield, and then we'll get right to you, sir.
I, I'm glad you got the number right, but the, the ten percent of the units are not rental only. They can be rental or owner occupied according to that, that step.
And this does not identify them as a specific street number or location, just within that development, there can be no more than ten percent at any one time, correct? I believe that was, that was the idea, that was the intent.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Sure. So, I will withdraw my motion. Is that correct, Ms. Littlefield? And then I will make a motion on item twenty dash four eighty-one to approve with the following stipulation. Density is limited to one hundred and eighty-five residential units. All units which face Chapel Hill Road or Arbor Place Boulevard shall have garages with doors which face away from the named street. Prior to issuance of any building permit, the developer or owner shall identify not fewer than one hundred and sixty-seven units and record covenants in the Douglas County deed records limiting occupancy to unit owners and prohibiting use of units for rental occupancy. And that does include the six-foot fence, as we had discussed. That's my motion. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to approve item twenty dash four eighty-one with the stipulations as read by the chair that are inclusive of garages, ten percent rental fencing, and all those special concerns or concessions that the chairman has read. So, I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. So, it's been properly moved in second to approve item twenty dash four eighty-one with the stipulations as read by the chair and second by Mayor Pro Tem. Do we have any other comments or questions or any concerns as it relates to this item from council members? Thank you. Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item twenty dash four eighty-one is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And again, we appreciate the developer and the homeowners and the community working together on that. And we wish you the best. We will move on then to item H. Consider a petition to annex fifteen point five nine three acres at five oh one one, five oh two nine, five oh four nine, and five oh five nine Reservoir Drive in landlot twenty-four, District one, Section five, Parcells ten, eleven, seventy-four, and seventy-six. Application by Joanne A. Wood and Clayton Preston of Reservoir Holdings LLC. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. Again, this item simply annexes those county parcels into the city.
Thank you, ma'am. Any question or comment, any further discussion needed by council or Madam Mayor? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve item twenty dash five eighteen.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve item twenty dash five eighteen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I think I had unanimous dueling seconds from Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Davis. So, it's been properly moved in second to approve this item. Do we have any further discussion as it relates to this annexation from council members? Thank you. Not seeing any. All those in favor of approving item twenty dash five eighteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Twenty dash five eighteen is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We'll move on then to item I. Consider a request for final plat approval for In-Line Communities for the purpose of lot consolidation of six tracks for eighteen point two acres at five oh one one, five oh two nine, five oh four nine, and five oh five nine Reservoir Drive and on Arbor Place Boulevard, landlot twenty-four, District one, Section five, Parcel ten, eleven, seventy-four, and seventy-six, and landlot twenty-three, District one, Section five, Parcells one twenty-four and one twenty-five. Application by In-Line Communities LLC. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. Again, this item simply allows, allows us to do the setbacks correctly, so we want to do the final plat to do the setbacks.
Question, comment? Anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
And this is just about the development in, in whole. I know there are the last three items inclusive of this one is for Reservoir Drive. I want to again reiterate what council members have said. Thank you to the developer and the citizens for coming together. I know it's in Mayor Pro Tem's ward, but we're on different pieces of the, of the pie. We may live in different areas, so we're all in the city. And what's good for one area is good for the other, so we appreciate you being amenable. Come let us reason together, and we thank you so much for doing that and having public meetings and, and all of that. I know it was a lot of your time, so thank you so much. We welcome you to the community. We're very happy that you've chosen to stay with us and build in the area. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other counsel? I noticed someone's hand go up in the audience, and I want to make sure that we get all of the public comments out. Come forward. Make sure that there's no misunderstanding.
Cindy Welch, three zero zero two Concord Way, Douglasville, Georgia. At the time of the rezoning, you were stating about the ten percent that could be rentals, but there was something said when they got building permits that they would be, that doesn't even make sense to me.
We, we're asking that that be done prior to any building permits being issued. Is that correct, Ms. Littlefield?
Yes.
But what if, if they do lot number one eighty-four, and that person may rent it and then decide that they want to buy that home? I mean, I would think that the rentals would be determined when somebody buys the property or rents the property, not at the point that the building permits are issued.
I may not, I may not, maybe, maybe we're talking about the same thing in a different way, Ms. Welch. What I took that to mean was that before we will issue any building permits to begin the building of the units, they must record those covenants with the county stating that there are rental restrictions and what percentage is the maximum that can be rented, when and if those are built.
Okay, I, I would agree with that.
That was the way I understood it. Is that the way it was meant to be, legal?
Okay.
Not identifying a particular address that cannot be rented or can be, but knowing that everyone is put on notice that at that time, when you start this development and you begin to buy permits, you've already done the covenant recording.
Okay, that's, that's what I, nothing was said about the covenants being recorded. I thought they were saying when they got the building permit, they had to say that house was rental or not.
No, ma'am.
Okay. I agree with the covenants, and thank you.
It's kind of like having the amenities up front, making certain that they're done.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I think also to clarify, if, if the market demands that we could have a hundred percent homeowner, there's no upper limit on the number of homeowners.
Correct.
Owner occupied. If it goes a hundred percent, it goes a hundred percent, but it can't go lower than ninety, though, so just to clarify that.
Yes, sir. Good point. Anyone else? Have we kicked this horse enough? There no other discussion, then I'm going to make a motion that we approve item twenty dash five one nine.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion to approve. May I have a second, please? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so, so much, Mister Mayor Pro Tem. It's been properly moved and second to approve item twenty dash five nineteen. Any additional comments as it relates to this, um, item from council members? Any further discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it, twenty dash five nineteen is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll change gears, we'll move to item J.
Mr. Chairman. Oh, we're still waiting on a vote from Councilman Watts.
Well, it's not, it's, it disappeared off my screen.
Get his hand. I know it. Let me go back to eighteen seventy-five, when they was raising their hands.
All y'all are working on that, I just wanted to say thank you very much, and I've enjoyed working with y'all and look forward to bringing a very good project for your city.
Thank you, sir.
So thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
I was gonna fill the gap with a discussion on the history of housing subsidies back to ancient Mesopotamia, but I'll put that off.
Don't do it.
Very much appreciated.
Quantificating. We knew he was watching.
Thank you, all votes have been recorded.
Work.
Are we clear to go forward?
Yes, sir, all votes have been recorded, thank you.
All right, thank you. Item J.
Yes, sir.
Hold a public hearing and consider a request for change in zoning from R.A. Residential Agricultural District County to O.I. Office Institutional City for six point seven six two acres at thirty-four forty-one King Drive, twenty thirty-two Riverside Parkway, twenty fifty-two Riverside Parkway, and twenty seventy Riverside Parkway in Land Lot one fifty-six, District One, Section Five, Parcel forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, and fifty-one. Application by Serenity at New Manchester LLC. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. At this time, staff has nothing new to add, but we do have the applicant with us for further questions.
Thank you, Miss Williams. Comments, questions? Uh, we've heard from the applicant on Thursday. Are there any comments or questions by, by, uh, council or Madam Mayor? Okay, it being a public hearing, once again, we'll state, we need to give opportunity for anyone who may want to speak for or against the item to please come forward. With new information, please.
Good evening, Philip Sisk, nine nine oh five Hardwick Greenway, um, Douglas Hill, three oh one three five. I wasn't here Thursday night, so I'm not sure that this will be new information, but first of all, I wanna say, uh, that, uh, we all appreciated Mister Allen, uh, presenting the information to us so we could, uh, see it firsthand, what it was gonna be. And of course, I believe at my age that this is something needed in the community, um, because I would like to stay here in future years. And this is so in keeping with the vision that we all had for Riverside Parkway. The design of it is very attractive and, um, it'll be in keeping with not only tributary but the other developments along Riverside Parkway as well. We believe it'd be a great addition. And I cannot speak for our whole community, but I can tell you from everyone I've talked to that we certainly support this change. And thank you for your time, I know it's, it's a tough job, thanks.
Thank you, Mister Sisk. Anyone else? Who would like to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, then we will close the public hearing. Any other question or comment of council? Seeing none, I will make a motion then to approve item twenty dash three ninety-eight.
Thank you so much, Mister Chairman, I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes, it's been probably moved, uh, probably made a motion to approve and second to approve item twenty dash three ninety-eight. Any additional comments from council members, further discussion? Probably moved a second, did you push the thing? Any other? I thought it's on hand, no. Okay, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it, twenty dash three ninety-eight is unanimously approved.
Move on to item K. Consider a petition to annex six point seven six two acres at thirty-four forty-one King Drive, twenty thirty-two Riverside Parkway, twenty fifty-two Riverside Parkway, and twenty seventy Riverside Parkway in Land Lot one fifty-six, District One, Section Five, Parcels forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, and fifty-one. Application again by Serenity at New Manchester LLC. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. At this time, we have no further information. Again, the applicant is with us for further questions.
Thank you, Miss Williams. Questions, comments concerning this annexation request? Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, only, um, not about the annexation, but the property, again, the whole project. We appreciate Mister Allen working with the community. Again, it really speaks to, um, how much interaction that we have with the community and developers. The citizens are very concerned and we're happy that people take, um, interest in their community and how it grows, so thank you, Mister Sisk, for well, representing the tributary area and, um, Councilmember Estes and everyone. So we appreciate you working with the community as well and coming with this memory care place. It looks like it's gonna be a great project. So I just wanted to thank you for your time. Thank you so much, Mister Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. Any others? Then seeing no other comment or question presented, I'll make a motion to approve item twenty dash five twenty-three.
Thank you so much, Mister Chairman, I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes, it's been properly moved and second to approve item twenty dash five twenty-three. Any further discussion as it relates to this item from council members? Thank you, not seeing any, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it, twenty dash five twenty-three is unanimously approved.
Item L. Hold a public hearing and consider a request for change in zoning from C.H.C. Commercial Heavy Conditions in the County to L.I. Light Industrial City for fifteen point eight seven five acres at twenty eighty-four Skyview Drive, Land Lot five twenty-one, District Eighteen, Section Two, Parcel Three. Application by Oakmont Acquisitions LLC. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. At this time, I have no further information or new information to offer, however, we do have the applicant with us tonight.
Thank you, Miss Williams. Questions from council or Madam Mayor, or the applicant, or any comment? Any new information that anyone would like to provide as far as comments for or against? Seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing and make a motion to approve item twenty dash four sixty-nine.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, I have a motion to approve twenty dash four sixty-nine, is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you so much, it's, I think Councilman, uh, Davis or Councilman Watts. But it's been properly moved and second to approve twenty dash four sixty-nine. Do we have any additional comments or questions as it relates to this item from council members? Thank you, I don't see any. All those in favor of approving twenty dash four sixty-nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it, twenty dash four sixty-nine is unanimously approved.
Item M.
Mm-hmm.
Consider a petition to annex fifteen point eight seven five acres at twenty eighty-four Skyview Drive, Land Lot five twenty-one, District Eighteen, Section Two, Parcel Three. Application by Thornton Way Auto Land. Ms. Patrice Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. Again, at this time, we have no new information to offer, however, we do that, do have the applicant with us.
Thank you, Miss Williams. Questions, council, Madam Mayor, concerning this annexation, annexation application? Everybody's gotten quiet all of a sudden. Guess you're ready for me to be finished, okay? Item twenty dash five oh five, make a motion to approve.
Thank you so much, Mister Chairman, I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis, it's been properly moved and second to approve item twenty dash five zero five. We did, received the information from the county as, in regards to this, um, annexation without any, uh, opposition. So, having said that, all those, and we have any additional comments or questions as it relates to this item? Not seeing any, all those in favor of approving item twenty dash five zero five, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it, twenty dash five zero five is unanimously approved.
And last but not least, item N. Hold a public hearing and consider a request for change in zoning from G.C. General Commercial District to L.I. Light Industrial District in the Quality Growth Development Overlay for nine point four four acres located on Blair's Bridge Road in Land Lot five eighty-one, District Eighteen, Section Two, Parcel Two, and Land Lot six sixteen, District Eighteen, Section Two, Parcel One. Application by Native Development Group LLC. Ms. Williams?
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh one Church Street. Uh, at this time, we have no new information to offer, we do have the applicant's attorney with us if you have any questions.
Thank you, Miss Williams. Anyone have any questions or comments? The applicant? Anyone that would like to speak for or against this, uh, application? With new information, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and make a motion to approve item twenty dash three ninety-seven.
Thank you so much, Mister Chairman, I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes, it's been properly moved and second to approve item twenty dash three ninety-seven. Do we have any other comments as it relates to this item from council members? Thank you, not seeing any, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it, twenty dash three ninety-seven is unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that's all we have tonight.
Thank you so much, Councilman Adams, you did a wonderful job, a lot of items. We'll move on to item number thirteen, which is Public Improvement and Beautification Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have no business this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Public Relations Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. We'll keep moving forward with item fifteen, which is Public Safety, and that's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No, I, this time, Madam Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you so much, Councilman Davis. Item sixteen is Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have one item tonight, appoint Denise Overfield as the post seven member of the Douglasville Public Art Commission for a term ending July first, twenty twenty-two. That is, uh, item twenty dash four nine eight, I'd like to make a motion to approve that item.
Thank you so much, Councilman Watts, Mister Chairman, we have a motion to approve item twenty dash four ninety-eight. Do we have any comments or questions or any further discussion as it relates to this item from council members? You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Councilman Estes. Any comments? Thank you, not seeing any, all those in favor of approving twenty dash four ninety-eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. I know, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, um, abstained and left the room because this is his wife, Doctor Overfield, so that's why he didn't wanna be in, you know, be partial, impartial, so, or couldn't be impartial because it's his wife. But she's highly qualified. So it's been unanimously approved for all the council members in the room to appoint, uh, Doctor Denise Overfield to post seven for the Public Arts Commission for a term ending in July first, twenty twenty-two. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it again, twenty dash four ninety-eight is approved. That's all you have.
Anybody having a problem, okay. Never mind. Miss, um, Madam Mayor, that's all I had tonight.
Thank you so much. We will go on to Technology Committee, Mayor Pro Tem isn't in, so Councilman Davis, would you take Technology Committee for me?
No, I, just add, Madam Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you so much, Councilman Davis. We'll move on to, um, Transportation Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Doctor LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the item under Transportation was under the consent agenda and there aren't any other items.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
You're welcome, thank you so much. Do we have any other business to come before council members this evening from, uh, the elected body?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to, uh, to quick shout out to, uh, Greg Roberts and his maintenance crews for taking care of some, uh, deceased trees on Arbor Parkway and, and Arbor Station. Thank you very much for you guys getting on that fairly quickly, um, on the request of the citizens.
Thank you so much, Mister Mayor Pro Tem, it's always good to give kudos, and we appreciate Mister Roberts, we know he is a hardworking, uh, director. And so, uh, thank you so much for saying that, he's always helpful. Any other business to come before council tonight from the elected body?
Back at, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, as I'm not asking for any, uh, party planners or anyone to lose sleep over this, just, uh, a little light nudge, if you will, that I know that the governor's orders will be expiring before you know it, and I would like you guys to just maybe take it all in and think about how you would like to move forward. I just feel like if we fail to plan, we plan to fail, and I know that a lot of other communities are already making plans and having events, and I just hope that when we can open up our doors back, that we have something to bring people back to, that they're still coming here, because as I talk to people, they're telling me that they're going other places, and it's sad. So just...
So Councilmember, uh, Miller, and you're talking about a reference to special events for the holidays?
I am.
Yes, ma'am. I believe, um, the city manager, oh, I know the city manager and I have spoken, and, uh, Miss, she's already left, Miss, uh, Williams, for community development, that we're thinking of some things that can be safe to do, uh, especially for Christmas. I know the county is holding, um, an event in November for Thanksgiving for, uh, turkey giveaways that will, they ask the city to support them with, so I'm not certain about what we'll do for, I know we, it doesn't look like we can have our Christmas parade, but we're not a hundred percent sure, but we will do something.
Right, and...
So I don't know if we're gonna unveil what the, what the something is right now, because we're still working on it.
I get it, and I understand that right now we're having to take another approach to things and do it in a safe manner.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna make sure that we are taking into account the months to come and what we're going to do going forward.
Yes, ma'am. City Manager, do you wanna elaborate on anything?
Um, Miss Miller has already spoken with me, and I told her, um, I'd asked her to get with her colleagues so you all can just decide how you wanna move forward, and I would say particularly in the spring, um, Jason Post, who is your Director for Community Relations, is already working on some things to try to bring, um, some of those events back, but of course, as she mentioned, everything would be contingent upon the governor's orders and what he chooses to do.
Yes, ma'am, and so, uh, Councilmember Miller, I was thinking maybe for Christmas if that we were still to, uh, you know, rent our Santa, I mean, I'm not gonna say, if Santa can come from the North Pole with his reindeers, still at the conference center, light the tree, um, and still do the candy, the stockings that we give out. If maybe we have a station and cars can drive down, uh, Church Street and pick up their, uh, bat, their, um, stockings for their kids, and maybe see the lights and, and encourage people to decorate their homes and maybe have a drive-through like Callaway Gardens to see lights and, um, and press on Mister Greg and Miss Williams to really decorate the downtown area, which is inclusive, you know, East Strickland and West Strickland and all that area, so, and by the mall. So heavy on decorations, maybe drive-through like it's Callaway Gardens and have some of the, um, ask Santa to come from the North Pole with the reindeer, light the Christmas tree, give out stockings. And we'll continue to move something in that direction, but I know we have other creative minds, so if anyone else has information or any recommendations, please talk to me and the city manager, we can talk to Miss Williams and Mister Roberts and make it happen.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other business to come before council this evening from council members? Thank you, not seeing any, then we'll go to updates from our city staff, um, our city attorney, Mister Joel Dotson. Thank you so much, Mister Dotson. Chief Assistant City Attorney, Miss Susan Littlefield.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, our chief for the Police Department, we have Major Davison.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you for your input this evening. Um, our city manager, Miss Marsha Hampton.
No business, Madam Mayor.
What? Okay. Okay. Staff report, a discussion regarding streets for consideration for the submission to GDOT, Georgia Department of Transportation, under the twenty twenty-one LMIG resurfacing program, and that's Mr. Roberts, and that's what Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdenly alluded to earlier, under Transportation. Mr. Roberts?
Good evening, council.
Evening.
Greg Roberts, uh, Director of the Public Services Department, eighty-four eighty-five Courthouse Square West. Um, citizens can email us to sanitation at douglasville GA dot gov, and, uh, we, we just enjoy serving the city, that's what our name says. Um, he- here you have before you, uh, just a breakdown of three, um, scenarios that we could do. Uh, uh, the first two represent all five wards with at least one street. That last one does not have one for Ward One, uh, but that could be resolved if you liked that list of streets. I will tell you that I've got to put hard numbers to these, and if, if that works out, I've already talked to, uh, city manager and Ms. Callen, um, that, um, we, we do have the funds to cover these numbers here, and hopefully, once I put hard numbers to them, that it'll shake out a little different, and I may come back to you with a different list. For example, if you were to choose this first scenario, even though I didn't number them, it's the one at the top, if we were to, if you were to tell me tonight that you want me to work on that one and come back to you with the hard numbers, once I put those hard numbers, I can tell you whether we could add a couple more streets or something. Um, I will point out two things on here. On all three scenarios, you'll see Chapel Cove,
Mm-hmm.
and I got the number of sixteen five in red. That is not, that does not reflect against the bottom number, uh, of eight thirty, because, uh, that's money that a developer, a builder, put up for that street,
Mm-hmm.
and he has, uh, completed those streets, so we have that money. I just want to get it done on this project.
Okay.
Then you'll see West Pines Golf.
Mm-hmm.
I would have put it up there in the red, but its numbers do need to reflect against this number. It's a, um, I've estimated about fifty-five hundred dollars. So, it's the area of the West Pines main entrance, when you get in, when you go up the hill, that last little part of the hill right before you get to the clubhouse,
Mm-hmm.
over the gas line. And so, my assumption is several years ago, when we installed that road and that area, um, that the contractor we had at that time sort of soft pedaled it over the gas line, and so I've already communicated with the gas company. They will, once we're doing that project, they'll have somebody on site, and, uh, so we'll try to make a permanent repair. But if you see it, it's, it's probably, we'll probably get another year, year and a half out of it if we don't fix it, so.
That's the one I talked about, Mr. Greg, with the crumbled up?
You did mention it.
Yes, sir.
When we drove over there.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, so, uh, I believe we can cover that here. The rest of the road's in fairly good shape, uh, it's just this needs to be addressed, and it's bigger than our in-house crews can deal with. So, from there, whatever comments or questions you have on any of these, we do have a, a little more time than usual, so this has to be submitted by February one, twenty twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
I don't want to wait that long, I'd like to get it submitted much sooner than that. But, uh, so we have plenty of time, but, um, you see the breakdown at the top, um, the, the program amount that, uh, GDOT, uh, has given for this project was the, um, uh, three, the three twelve one sixty-three ninety-eight, um, and our match would be ninety-three six forty-nine twenty. So, the, the minimum expenditure for that project would be, uh, four oh five eight thirteen, but, uh, I don't like landing so close to that number, because we have to, we have to spend that much as a minimum.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, I'll quit chatting, and you can give me feedback on these.
Okay, so, Mr. Greg, you want us as, um, to, at, to submit, uh, from the three options? You want us to individually tell you or come up with the consensus of? Now, I do want to ask you, I want to put you on the spot, but you, but you say when you do, uh, a little bit here, a little bit there, and different wards, it really doesn't make a big difference. So, is that what number one is? Just giving everybody a little bit?
Well, I, I, I do think it's important to try and give something in every ward.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we've done a lot of paving in Ward One, uh, over the last few years, the splosh got us way ahead.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and Councilmember Adams, to his credit, he mentioned, why do I have so many twos in there? That's his ward, he wasn't complaining, he just asked. Uh, and that's the older part of the city,
Mm-hmm.
uh, generally speaking, and some of those streets have not been resurfaced in twenty-plus years. Um, I'll say what I've said here before. Uh, we get a lot of bang for our buck in the city of Douglasville on streets. Most, most cities, their roads are coming apart in twelve, less than fifteen years, and we've, um, some of those I'll claim responsibility for, those were put in in the nineties, some of those were just now resurfacing. Um, it, which proves to me, you put in a good road to begin with, the asphalt will last a lot longer. It might not make contractors happy every time, but the road lasts a long time for the taxpayer.
Yes, sir, so, but, but it's okay if we were to do number one, is this your, do you have a, a, a particular?
I put this first one together, I think that's a good, it, it captures a lot of streets,
Mm-hmm.
and once I put hard numbers to it, um, I may come back to you and say, hey, we might need to pull a street, or we might can add a couple.
Okay.
Because we, uh, to be honest with you, and there's a secondary list that's not really to, um, I think I've submitted it. I think you, I know you've seen it before, but when you can, when you think about streets that are fours and fives, tens being the best, four being the worst on the list,
Mm-hmm.
um, we have, uh, including the streets that you see on this list, we have ninety-four streets that still fall in the fours and five category.
Okay.
That's a lot of streets, that's a few million dollars. It's not a few hundred thousand dollars, it's a few million.
Okay.
And so, uh, there are other streets that I would like to get done
Yes, sir.
over the next couple of years, but, uh...
Is your priorities right now based on the, um, AE Comm and how they've given us a rating of the streets and what you can get done?
Yes.
Element, uh, okay. Well, I'll open it up for, so did you want us to do individually, text you or email you and tell you, or you want us to discuss?
I'm good either way, if anybody wants to go ride and look at them, I'm always available.
Okay, well, I...
I would make myself available.
I, I'm, I'm voting for number one, but I'll open up the floor for council members, Councilman Adams said something first, so I'll recognize him.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts, I appreciate you putting all this together for us. Uh, I, you've already reiterated one thing. The streets within our community in the city, then, anything that's worse than a four, we have already addressed, is that correct?
Yes, um, we, we got rid of most of those over the last couple of years,
Right.
but we didn't have that many that were worse than a four rating. Um, uh, we did have s- a couple of streets that were threes, but they were really small streets.
Okay, so, having said that, then, the balance of the money, the minimum expenditure would be four hundred and five thousand eight hundred dollars, and we have to take it, take out of general fund, I'm assuming ninety-three thousand six hundred dollars, plus, out of splosh, plus the difference? The difference between seven hundred and thirty thousand eight hun- five hundred or eight hundred?
Yes.
That comes out of splosh.
So, we do have the funds there.
What I was trying to get at was, there's a hundred thousand dollars difference in the two options. So, if we're coming out of general fund, then maybe we, we consider the lesser because of what we're going through with COVID. But if we're coming out of splosh funds and they're already there and earmarked for us, then maybe we're not limited to that, that was my comment.
This is, if you all recall, when we had a retreat in February, you're gonna leave a substantial amount in your contingency, because there was not enough to do a, uh, there, a third set of resurfacing, so this comes out of that contingency to match.
Okay, that's why you're the finance chair. I'm, uh, just ask my husband, I don't even know what I just keep spending until he tells me. Councilman, who else had a comment?
Thank you.
That isn't good. Councilman Estes, did you want to say anything?
No, I, I agree with, with, uh, Councilman Adams.
Mm.
Uh, and now that we have the, the financial side clarified,
Mm-hmm.
um, I, option one looks good to me as well.
Okay. Any other com- yes, ma'am, Transportation Chair?
No, this is a new list.
So, I just wanted to ask about Cockwood Street and Hollis Street.
Um, Cockwood and Hollis.
Cone, Green, all of them.
Yeah, uh, Cockwood, um, let's see where they fall on that list of ninety-four. Cockwood is, is rated at a five and six. Um, and so it's in a little better condition than the ones that I've presented to you here. And, and, and I'll, I'll, I'll reiterate if I, or, or I'll do it for the first time if I failed, but I was trying to make things fit within these numbers here, and so.
Mm-hmm.
Hollis Street, um, we, um, we probably can get that one on there. Um, let me run these numbers tighter, and Hollis Street, uh, was a... And that's what's difficult about some of these, Mayor, uh, Robinson will remember, on one of our ride-alongs, you remember, you, you mentioned in a particular neighborhood that I won't mention, uh, you mentioned that, uh, see, Hollis Street is probably listed, um, a six, because it's not on this four and five list.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, it is.
We talked about waiting until the, um...
Yes. And, and that's a good point.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but, uh, but the, but the mayor, you've mentioned, you mentioned in a particular area where we're in back last year that a lot of these streets could be paved, and I said, yes, ma'am, we could, we could pick, and Mr. Adams and I had this same conversation, there are some subdivisions, we could pick the entire subdivision and just do every street, and we'd probably spend seven hundred thousand dollars just in one neighborhood, and we wouldn't get anything else done anywhere.
Right.
And that's one of the reasons, that's the benefit of the AE Comm study that you mentioned, and they put together this list of all of our streets.
Right.
Um, that, that helped us to kind of put them in, in a good perspective, and I'm trying to update those, so some of those that were rated a five back when AE Comm did it, I have advanced those to a four, so that's one reason that list has expanded, um, but, um...
And just trying to be fair and equitable based on need?
Uh, ye- yes, that, and trying to get those streets that, in my guesstimation,
Mm-hmm.
we have less than twenty-four months to do something with.
Yeah, they deteriorate to that point.
Because once they start peeling apart, they, they're a major problem.
Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, if, and if you need another list of an entire development or entire subdivision that needs to be paved, if you all concur, then, I mean, I have one, and I'm sure most, most of us in our wards have one.
Probably have three of those.
That, that we could come up with an entire development, and I have constituents that have requested, well, why can't we? Why can't you just do all the streets while you're there? And so, Mr. Roberts and I did a ride-along this week to try to address that situation, uh, and I just don't, that, even though I would, I would like to see us be able to do that, what does that do to the balance of the community when we do that?
Yeah, we have to try to spread out the wealth. Councilman Davis?
Mr. Roberts, can you get me the, either Wednesday or Thursday? And, uh, and we're out, look at it?
I can on Wednesday.
Okay.
I'm available to Mr. Davis.
You know where I hang out at?
I'll, I'll text you and we'll see what's best for you, and I'll make it work on my end.
All right.
I might even let you buy me lunch.
I can do that.
Council, Mayor Pro Tem, did you have any?
I, I just say, you know, I'm, I'm fine with only one street on there only because, as Mr. Roberts pointed out, you do a substantial portion of, you do a substantial portion of, of Arbor Station in the last year or two.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm, I'm pretty happy with the condition of the roads over there now. But that, you, you are, you do have the one street, though, the Whitetail, that was brought up by a number of residents, and they had some issues with, having walked it, I can say, yeah, there, it definitely could use a good repaving.
And that one falls within that twenty-four months or less, having to start patching on it.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other, I didn't mean to leave anyone out, Councilmember Miller in? No comments? Councilman Watts? I didn't call you last because you're not, you're just like the alphabet or something, I think, okay? W comes in, yes, City Manager?
I was just gonna ask if everybody could get with Mr. Roberts between now and your next council meeting, so we can come with one final recommendation for you to vote on.
And that the options are the three that we have listed here.
We'd like to present one, so you're not having to vote between three, yes, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and to the point of Ms. Hampton, this would really just give you some scenarios and look at some costs on some streets. These three lists do not vary that much.
Right.
Uh, most of the streets appear on all three, with the exception of a couple.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Mr. Roberts, we appreciate you.
If I could update you on one other thing?
Oh, yes, please.
So, on the GDOT information that we had talked about a couple weeks ago, where, um, GDOT said they were wanting to do the traffic shift at, um, on New Fairburn Road or New Ninety-two at Hospital Drive, they've put that off now, it's probably going to happen in January. Um, we, we really didn't, we didn't, we didn't really want it to happen before the, or during the middle of the holidays anyway, and so, um, uh, we, I, I do not expect that they'll come back with that request, and part of it has to do with, they, they ran into some rock on some of the traffic signals on that new section,
Mm-hmm.
and so they're gonna have to deal with that, and that's gonna give them a significant delay. And so, right now, it looks like it'll be January or later.
Or the...
Hey, we are, we should be the Rock City.
And there, CW Matthews, they are doing some work on Hospital Drive, though, aren't they?
Yes, in fact, they were paving that new section today.
Fairburn.
Yes, at, uh, between Fairburn and the new road,
Mm-hmm.
right there at the drug, uh, drugstore.
Yes, sir.
What was that, um, CVS?
CVS.
And, um, so they've still got a lot of work to do at those intersections, though, and, uh, that, that, that project is going to continue to make changes on a daily and weekly basis, but hopefully, this traffic shift does not come back up until after the first of the year.
Sounds good. Any other comments, yes, sir, Councilman Adams?
I just wanted to make sure, how, how do we go about deciding this, uh, City Manager?
Based on the feedback that you all provide to Mr. Roberts, he's gonna come with one final list, um, for you all to vote on in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Wanted to know, uh, I don't have the information from me, maybe the City Manager does, there's some, we got a memo that there's gonna be some filming downtown this week, is that correct?
Um, Ms. Jackson, is she still here? She is our filming, um, do you know, uh, Major Davison, yes, you're her backup?
I do. Uh, the filming is tomorrow and Wednesday, and it's from seven AM to seven PM on Church Street, down towards Fairburn Road.
Are there gonna be street closures for that?
Yes.
Okay.
There'll be street, uh, Church Street will be closed, and I think part of James, uh, and there'll be signage for that.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to make sure for anybody who's listening, they know that there were, there were gonna be some closures
Mm-hmm.
in the next couple of days, and so, be aware of that.
Yes, sir. Are signs out, Major Davison?
I don't know if they're up at this point. All the, I do know that all of the businesses have been contacted and are aware of it, and they've made arrangements so that each business can still have access.
This is a, as a caution, um, going over the tracks, like at, um, Mitchell's, you know, like, uh, that's a cut through to Church Street from Dallas Highway, just beware, people will probably try and make a left turn on Dallas How- I mean, on, on seventy-eight, if they're not going down Church Street, just a heads up.
Is there a sign there?
There's a sign there, but
Yeah.
people will do, I mean, I see them do it all the time, but being that you can't go Church Street,
Mm-hmm.
they'll try and make that left turn, so just a heads up.
Be very cognizant of that, hopeful people will be safe. Um, thank you so much, any other comments?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilman Watts?
I, I just now reading this email, uh, about the Parks and Rec receiving the CAPRA accreditation.
Oh.
After two years, and, uh, I just thought that was pretty cool. I, Mr. Landrum's not here, so maybe the next council meeting, we make sure he's here and we, with the hardware, and we could recognize him then, but anyway, just want to let council know just in case you missed it.
That is so exciting.
That.
A lot of hard work, we're very proud of our Parks and Recreation Department and Mr., um, Landrum, doing a wonderful job. Any other comments? Okay, well, comments from citizens and delegates, we moved to that portion of the agenda. And, um, if we have anyone that has sustained the meeting and would like to address this, please come forward to give your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to say, with any, any business germane to City Council or potential business? No? Okay. Well, not seeing any, uh, comments, then this meeting is adjourned. Mr. Roberts?